This conference will now be recorded.
Followed September 7th, Nancy Pelosi. Oh, let's stand for a moment and silent prayer. All right, call please.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
We have some special wards tonight. We do have a plug of an extension area in terms of what we did there. So we'll open the second extension area for West 10th Street extension.
If anybody has any comments about the appropriateness of the annexation of the West 10th Street, this is the property that is Dearburg? Yeah. Dearburg Village. They did the extension and they turned the road extension over to us and our, to the city. And so the city has filed a petition to bring that part into the city limits. So.
No comments? So we'll go into special wards soon. Any warrants come forward? You can make your presentation for the fifth or two.
Yes, sir. Officer Snow was hired on August 24th of 2006 and has been on patrol for five years. He currently works as a day shift on that rotation providing experience and control presence to our patrol division. Officer Snow also has carbon armor and armor moving that's within our rifle. Officer Snow is going to take care of the work he provides. Corporal Silvee started this police department on August 27th of 2006. He worked as a patrol officer for three years before he entered first as a traffic management unit in 2009. Corporal Silvee is our department's accident reconstruction certified officer. He's also a member of the state of Missouri Accident Law and Work of Traffic Advisory Council. I don't know if you're excuse me for that. Corporal Silvee is a military officer and a member of our department training unit. Corporal Silvee was promoted to corporal in 2019 while he currently works on day shift, back rotation as a supervisor to the Department of Traffic. Corporal Silvee, it's my pleasure to be with you.
So is you, Mr. Officer Hager Heart, is by your chair?
Yeah.
Tommy Sims, come forward. Tommy, can I make it in the water of Sedalia here for how long, 23 years?
Twenty-one and a half years.
Wow. If you work out there when we were, it was just pretty much like four.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of a little bit different than, than that. Well, fresh, it's still important. Appreciate that. We're going to miss you. You know, I think you've been a solid, big train. I hope you're ready and, and.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tommy, appreciate that. It's a neat place to work. It's nice to get out in the area of corporate supply, the key area, historic buildings and the process is interesting. So, council members probably just don't pay out there very often. Every now and then I think you can, like.
Yes, sir.
Can I add a boss called Troll over?
[laughing]
I'm taking. I don't know. Probably shouldn't joke about that anymore. I don't hurt.
Thanks for the attention. It could be a problem.
[applause]
Next on the home of the agenda is, we need a motion to approve a special session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do you need a special meeting? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Chairman Seaver class?
Can we do those in block, those eight minutes? All three?
We did, didn't we?
Okay. Finance administration means the city uses a voice over internet system provided by Mitel for its telephone systems. That's not Mitel, that's Mytel. The current software licensing and support agreement for this system expires on September 14th. We've used the authorized service representative Blue Alley for the licensing and support for the last few years and they were successful bidder for the renewal last year. However, this company is changing their offerings for these support services which increase costs by 68%. Staff therefore reached out to two other bidders from last year for updated quotes. CMS solutions came back with the best quote for similar service levels currently in place. Further, they've offered a three-year agreement that will provide some additional savings. The one-year renewal would be $4,111 with the three-year commitment at $10,426. Staff recommends accepting the quote for the three-year commitment.
Any council discussion? All right, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2021-125, an ordinance authorizing a three-year licensing and support agreement for the city of Sedalia, Missouri's Mitel phone system.
Motion, uh, second reading?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-125, an ordinance authorizing a three-year licensing and support agreement for the city of Sedalia, Missouri's Mitel phone system.
Final passage?
Second.
Call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
All right, thank you. Chairman, your first question of us?
Public safety has only one item for consideration tonight. The police department has identified a couple of grants through the Missouri Department of Public Safety that could fund signed night vision equipment and a dual-band portable radio. Staff recommends approval of the two resolutions to authorize Chief Work to submit these grant applications.
Any questions, council? All right, would you read the resolutions, please?
First resolution is 1935, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the city of Sedalia in the application process for the 2021 Officer Safety Equipment and Technology, OSET, grant from the Missouri Department of Public Safety to be utilized in the Sedalia Police Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Second resolution is resolution number 1936, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the city of Sedalia in the application process for the 2021 State Homeland Security Program, SHSP, grant from the Missouri Department of Public Safety to be utilized by the Sedalia Police Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Public Works, Chairman Thomas Ol.
We have six items for the Public Works Committee tonight. The first one here is included in our strategic, strategic plan and the budgeting process for this year is a project to construct a 65 by 65 box hanger, foot box hanger by the, at the airport. The project is funded by a federal grant through MoDOT at 90% of the total cost. With the design phase being completed, requests for proposals were issued and three bids were received. The lowest bid was from Septagon Construction for $645,942.80. The staff recommends approval of three ordinances at this time to approve the amendment of the grant to the grant agreement to cover the funding needed, approve the contract with Septagon for the construction, and an amendment to the agreement with the Lochner for Engineering Construction Management Services.
Also, is there any discussion about the three ordinances? All right, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2021-126, an ordinance authorizing the execution of amendment number one to the grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding an airport box hanger.
Second reading? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-126, an ordinance authorizing the execution of amendment number one to the grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding an airport box hanger.
Final passage?
Second.
Call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent. The next ordinance is bill number 2021-127, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with Septagon Construction Incorporated, Sedalia, for the construction of a box hanger.
Second reading?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-127, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with Septagon Construction Incorporated, Sedalia, for the construction of a box hanger.
Final passage?
Second. Call please.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
And the last ordinance is bill number 2021-128, an ordinance authorizing supplemental contract number one, binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and HW Lochner Incorporated for professional services related to the design and construction of a new box hanger at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Second reading? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-128, an ordinance authorizing supplemental contract number one, binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and HW Lochner Incorporated for professional services related to the design and construction of a new box hanger at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Final passage? Second.
Call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman is absent. So that's seven yes and one absent.
Second item I have tonight is a hanger ground lease for David Lindsay. These hangars are subject to a ground lease with the city. In short, while they own the building, the city still owns the land it is sitting on and leases the land to them for their hanger use. The staff recommends approval of a new lease of the land where this hanger is located with Mr. Lindsay as the new owning, owner of the building.
Also, any questions about this ordinance? All right, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2021-129, an ordinance authorizing an airport hanger ground lease binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and David Lindsay.
Second reading? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-129, an ordinance authorizing an airport hanger ground lease binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and David Lindsay.
Final passage? Second.
Call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson? Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. And Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The third item I have tonight is that the city is eligible to receive a $13,000 grant through the MoDOT Aviation Division from the CARES Act. The staff recommends approval of the proposed grant agreement to access these funds.
Any questions, council? Read the orders, please.
Bill number 2021-130, an ordinance approving and accepting an airport coronavirus relief grant program agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Transportation Aviation Division for operating and maintenance cost assistance at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Second reading? Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-130, an ordinance approving and accepting an airport coronavirus relief grant program agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Transportation Aviation Division for operating and maintenance cost assistance at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Final passage?
Call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
The fourth item I have tonight is a change order with MC Power Company. The contract for the replacement of a water well starting assembly originally called for the contractor to install two poles for mounting new equipment. Staff has identified a method that renders these poles unnecessary and recommend removing this equipment from the contract resulting in a savings of $1,672.
So Tom Masol, he does a great job of getting those produced. Any questions on this? Read the orders, please, all right?
Bill number 20, 2021-131, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in cost resulting from adjustments made during the replacement of an electrical cabinet located at water well number 11.
Second reading? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-131, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in cost resulting from adjustments made during the replacement of an electrical cabinet located at water well number 11.
Final passage? Second.
Call please.
Richardson? Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The fifth item I have tonight is a budget amendment and agreement for the Pelham and Central Regional Lift Station, including in the strategic plan for the sewer system of two lift station upgrades, one of the Thompson Meadows Industrial Park and one for the regional lift station near the central Missouri landfill. With the designs of these lift stations completed, we issued a request for bids and received two bids. The low bid from Infrastructure Solutions LLC is over budget by $250,244. This is due to added requirements for storage and increases in material costs above the engineer's estimate. Staff recommends that we still need to proceed with these necessary upgrades to handle the increased volumes we are realizing.
So Tom, I'm not going to hold out a guess here if this time there's an increase?
I, I got the $1,600 though back. I mean, come on.
Any questions about the resolution? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution 1937, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2021-2022 relating to the Pelham and Central Regional Lift Station projects.
Second reading? Second. Now, motions to approve.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Read the, any questions on the orders? Read the orders, please, all right?
Okay, the first ordinance is bill number 2021-132, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding the Pelham and Central Regional Lift Station projects.
Second reading?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-132, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding the Pelham and Central Regional Lift Station projects.
Final passage? Second.
Call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The final ordinance is bill number 2021-133, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition and replacement of the Central Regional and Pelham Lift Stations.
Second reading?
Second.
All favor? Oppose?
Bill number 2021-133, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition and replacement of the Central Regional and Pelham Lift Stations.
Final passage? Second.
Call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Council, if you could quickly refresh the council on before they go, the source of that money for, for that lift station.
Yeah, and, sir, well, you all remember in 2019, I believe it was, we refinanced the 2010 issue of the certificates of participation, the $30 million basically that was borrowed for the sewer, basically upgrading the sewer and removing the infiltration, or the inflow and infiltration. And as we did that, we had enough savings to essentially borrow, add $5 million to that debt and keep the payment essentially the same. So we added that $5 million to do these two lift stations plus upgrade the central plant to increase its capacity. So this is essentially half of that project and, and we're still working on the central plant upgrade. So that's where the funding is coming from for this.
Thank you.
Commander Dawson, committee of development?
I think I have one more item tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm used to those one and two, one and two items, so. But I have my sixth and final item tonight is a change order with Parrot Corporation regarding the Hager Community Center. As we are pulling together the final interior finishes, we identified an area of improvement where the elevated track around the gymnasium meets up with the exterior walls. As the track attaches to the structural steel of the building, it leaves gaps from the track to the unfinished interior of the building walls between the beams. Likewise, the horizontal girts are exposed, leaving an unfinished appearance to the track area. We have worked with the architects and contractor to design, to design and quote an interior finish for this area. The proposed change order includes $85,110 to add corrugated steel siding around the track area to make a much nicer finish. This would still be within our budget for the project. We have also been working to finalize the installation of security camera equipment. This part of the project has always been outside the scope of the construction contract and budget as well as, and budgeted as an outside contract. Now that we have the design and specifications of the equipment to be installed, we have identified the electrical and cabling requirements needed for this equipment. We have learned from the building of the police department that coordinating this with the electrical contractor reduces confusion and opportunities for gaps between the two contractors' work. Therefore, we have asked the electrical subcontractor on this building to bid the work of installing the security cameras we have now specified. The total cost of the equipment, wiring and installation is $134,656.31. Staff recommends approval of the proposed change order to add a total of $219,766.31 to the contract with the Parrot Corporation to add these two items.
Any council discussion?
If, if you would, sir, I, I do have a few pictures that Amy, Amy sent just to make sure we all understand the, what we're really talking about as far as that corrugated sheeting around the outside. If you look at this picture here, this is really the north wall of the gymnasium with the walking track up above it. And, and then this would be the south wall. So you can kind of see here, this is where you would have the normal finish of where the track meets up with the wall and then there's the, oh, the, the drywall and then the area, and then the next, you'll see the east and the west walls of that gymnasium really look like this, where you have the girts here exposed and then there is a, we'll see it in another picture here, but there's a gap here between where the track hooks up to the beams here, but to the interior finish of the exterior wall. So essentially this gap here that you would see here is what we're, what we're really talking about. But with it currently, there's a couple of things there. One is, is that this would be the exposed screws where they screwed the outside of the, of the building skin, the sheeting on the outside and through those girts, that's how it attaches. So on the inside, on this finish, there's those exposed screws. And then just as an example here, this is where, you know, of course, that, that ledge there just is a great place to accumulate ledge or dust and debris. And then in the corners, this is kind of an example, there'll be electrical outlets here to put equipment there and those kinds of things in these corners to not have that wasted space on that walking track. And so you'll see that, that, you know, without putting that sheeting over the top of this, this would be exposed where you have the conduit and then the, the plug-in, there's the outlets there. Whereas if we do the sheeting, then the sheeting will basically come from here to the track floor. Again, to kind of get a feel for the size there, that's, that's Matt Harris, he's what, six, six foot something? So basically that's just to kind of give you that perspective, there is, essentially that sheeting would go from there to there, so it'd give you about an eight-foot inside finish. So, is that anything you need?
No, I think, I mean, just for us, it's the, the safety is the number one thing. If you go around there, red irons, the park right there in the middle of the paddock, some people are walking around and then they grab onto the side and they walk around and you touch your hands. You have the nails, your knees up the deep as well, so little kids, you know, like their dad and mom and stuff, folks up and doing that, that unexposed area. The other part is the, just the making some gap and everything. You can sprinkle the edge, that's plus dust. You can imagine people sitting, putting their gums, putting cups, putting water bottles, everything else is going to accumulate there, not to mention worse things that could be in that area as well. So the cleaning, I mean, to me, the big thing is we have such a nice facility, we're under budget right now. This is something that, you have such a nice facility, let's clean it up and make sure that it looks nice throughout the whole facility. So that was our reason for wanting to do this. If not, what we'll have to do is that there's kind of a gap in between the wall and the concrete there. They would have to put like an L-shaped piece of metal, it would just come over and cover the top. So you still have everything exposed and looking the way that you see in those pictures. To me, it's a cosmetic. Safety is the number one thing, but cosmetic is number two. We are under budget. We've been very diligent with our budget and doing what we can, but I think for us, this is something that I am afraid that in a year or two years, we're going to come back and want to do it and the parks is going to have to pay for that to do it. It's going to cost twice as much. You're going to have to close down the track, close down the gym, and then you have the, you know, patrons asking, why didn't you do that to begin with? Well, we wanted to, it just didn't happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
So would we admit that there was a mistake in the design?
I wouldn't say necessarily there's a mistake. That was what we knew, we knew it was going to be exposed. We just didn't realize it was going to be what it exactly would look like. So they are covering that hole in there. So I guess to answer your question, Mr. Cross, yes, a little bit of the design that we wish, but at the time when we were putting this budget together, you know, the Hager Community Center together, we were trying to cut costs and make sure that we got under the $20 million budget that we wanted to. So that was one thing, they said, you know, you could leave it open and exposed. And we looked and, you know, Sacred Heart's Gym is open, exposed, but it's not two levels. Like the places we went were just one level. So one level, it doesn't look as bad, but then when you go to that second level and and you have those cliffs and people are walking, um, we didn't look at a facility that had it where you would be walking against the track and everything like that. And so, to me, you know, we're under budget and I think it's a, a good move to have.
Yeah, uh, uh, even though it is under budget, that's quite a bit of change, eighty-five thousand dollars.
It is a lot, it is, it is.
We don't have no more surprises until the building is complete.
Well, we're hoping not, so, and we've done a pretty good job along the way so far. I mean, we're almost there and we have stayed under budget and that's our number one goal, we want to stay under budget in this project for sure.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions I can answer?
Any other council members want to?
Great job, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All favor. Do the orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing change order number eleven for additional labor and materials in the walking track area at the Hecker Community Center.
Second reading.
Second.
All favor. Close.
Bill number twenty dash twenty-one dash one thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing change order number eleven for additional labor and materials in the walking track area at the Hecker Community Center.
Final passage.
Roll call please.
Bliss?
Check. Uh, yes.
Thank you. Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Mr. Dawson, committee of development?
We have one item on the agenda this evening. The, uh, ordinance that you have before you is the adoption of a lodging code, uh, it's a result of three separate work sessions and is in the best interest of the public as far as public safety is concerned. Uh, Minister Shaw has a presentation prepared on the, uh, changes that were made to that that is a result of those work sessions. Minister Shaw, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, sir. Uh, basically from the, from the previous work sessions and as well as since then, we've had a few conversations with, again, continuing conversations with some hotel owners. Um, and really the, the, the meat of the issues really came down to these three items. One was the, uh, how we handle the registered sex offenders, uh, and then a suggestion for a tiered system, uh, particularly as it pertained to the parking passes. And then, uh, finally, there was some concerns raised over AEDs as a requirement for a first aid when a, when a hotel has or a lodging establishment has a pool. So, just to kind of go through where we've, uh, what changes we've made since the last work session, so, uh, starting from the, the last work session, the, the draft that was there, uh, we've made the, the change here for, to address the concern raised on registering sex offenders and the posting, particularly posting of the signs in the lobby. And so, what we've done or what you have there on the screen is, is we made some changes and so the final draft that you have there in front of you or for consideration tonight, we changed that to instead of, um, posting a sign in the lobby, they just have to, if they get a hit on the, on a sex offender, stay in more than thirty, thirty-one days or more, then they just need to notify the police department. The police department then will check with the sheriff's department to make sure that that, uh, sex offender has registered with the sheriff's department as required and follow up and make sure everything's, everything's the way it's, the way it's supposed to be. But that puts then the onus then really on the police department to follow up on it after they've identified that person. Um, the second item is, is, uh, the, uh, the request or the suggestion by the hotel owners that the, uh, parking passes were somewhat, uh, onerous, uh, to comply with and so they recommended and through the discussion, uh, we talked about moving that to what we call, I guess, or what we, we consider the second tier and only apply to those hotels or lodging establishments where we've identified that there is criminal activity that is going on, that having parking passes would help us in, uh, mitigating or, or removing that, that criminal activity. So, what you see there is, is the red line version, the, the number five, under the requirements that would apply to all lodging establishments, we've stricken it out of that section and added an under the section where upon the chief police, chief of police's declaration that they're, that in their professional opinion, the establishment is being used for criminal activity. Then that becomes one of the criterias or one of the items that the, uh, police chief can designate to help mitigate that, um, that criminal activity. So, that was moved to that second tier. Uh, finally, the, there was really two concerns or two major concern areas, if you will, regarding the AEDs or the automatic external defibrillators. Um, there was a concern raised on the liability, so we researched that and, uh, there in front of you is section three of state statute one ninety point oh ninety-two, which basically says that, uh, is unless, unless you act in a wanton or reckless manner, anybody applying an AED is not liable, to include the, the establishment itself, the premises themselves are, cannot be held liable. Um, next was, there was some concerns raised on the cost to supply and to provide the training for the, uh, for the AED. So, um, my recommendation is, is to, well, there's certainly different options that, that council can, can consider. One is, is, uh, certainly we could remove it, uh, second, we could just leave it in as it is, and then third, which is what I recommend, is that we leave the language in there and that is what's in front of you. However, we would, um, make the commitment as the city to provide the initial, uh, units and, and then also provide training to them through our, um, EMTs through the, uh, through the fire department. Now, just this evening, uh, I, I've learned our, our fire department has been working with, uh, Boswell Foundation and they have, uh, they have committed that they have, they are supplying AEDs around to different entities around town and they've committed that if we give them some time, they'll come up with, um, uh, the AEDs to provide those. So, um, that really removes the cost on both the, the hotel owners and us, we would just have to, um, basically allow some implementation time to get that work through that process. Did I state that correctly?
And follow up that with the training.
Yeah, and then the, the training, we, um, uh, we did check on that, there is no certification required, there's no certification to provide the training and it's, and from what I understand, these, these units are pretty, uh, they're, they're designed for a layperson to administer them, so.
That's correct. And walking through every step.
So, with that, those were the, the major issues that I at least heard out of the, the, the work session. So, with that, I would send it back to council for additional, uh, discussion questions or...
Discussion of this, like? Mr. Orlean, would you read the orders, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-five, an ordinance permitting chapter twelve business regulations and taxation by adding article nine lodging establishments and article ten swimming pools into the code of ordinances of the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All favor. And I, close.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-five, an ordinance permitting chapter twelve business regulation and taxation by adding article nine lodging establishments and article ten swimming pools into the code of ordinances of the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
I'm reading, uh, liquor licenses, please.
We have two new licenses and four renewals. The new licenses are Sherry Beltran Doing Businesses Boys and Girls Club of West Central Missouri, thirty-one hundred Aaron Avenue for a picnic license, uh, picnic license. Brad Wickstrom, uh, Doing Businesses Craft Beer Cellar, seven hundred South Ohio for a special event for wings for wag September the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. The renewals are Tom Ederman Doing Businesses Best Western State Fair Inn at thirty-one twenty South Limit for a liquor-by-the-drink. Lara Diana Catalon Doing Businesses Morelos Talkilleria Bakery and Grocery at one twenty-five East Sixteenth for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Mike Emery Doing Businesses CVS Pharmacy, number one oh three oh five at one hundred East Broadway for a taste testing and packaged liquor and Sunday sales license. And Heather Viles Doing Businesses Dollar General, number one nine five three five at forty-two fifteen East Broadway for a packaged liquor license.
Motion to approve and block.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
And I close. Any council members or city ministers who might make any comments tonight about?
Uh, yeah, I'm pleased to report that we learned, um, uh, late last week that, uh, our fire department was awarded the, uh, at least a portion of the grant for, that they applied for, for the, um, air pack. And, uh, so that's going to be a big help. We, uh, uh, we were kind of sweating that one because we got one more year, I think, before, this was it, yes, now, yeah. So, um, uh, I congratulate them and thank Matt for, I know...
What does that mean, dollars?
Hundred and...
So, the grant awards one hundred and ten thousand dollars, of which we have eleven thousand, we have, that's ever the max, we have seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to satisfy the grant award.
Yeah.
So, the grant total was one hundred and twenty-one thousand, change eleven thousand of that dollars.
I thought it was a hundred and twenty plus another piece, wasn't it?
No, the hundred and ten plus the...
Okay, yeah, that's right.
We had, uh, so it was a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
That's the, the self-control training, right?
Mm-hmm. So, appreciate all your work on that. I know it was a big monumental tour.
If you have something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I went to a meeting last week, uh, through the National Steamboat Museum, uh, near Marsha Junction, and I think we should get behind that, um, there's, I'm going to get them to present at the October Municipal League event, but, uh, really a determined group and I think, uh, could really add tourism if we could get that, uh, at that junction of sixty-five and fifty. Really neat project that's just starting to get going, so I'll keep you informed on that. I know tourism's involved too, but, uh, I was asked to, I think that sounds like the...
So, my careful thoughts during the fiscal week reading and, uh, Tom and I, and I thought to see, that might be a good presentation on that.
Yeah, I'll ask if everybody agrees with that. But I kind of, Tom and I talked about it, tentatively I was going to ask Bill Stoker, who does the presentation, he just did the million cup and the articles in the paper, he did it, uh, earlier this week, I think, uh, at Sacred Community College at nine in the morning and I, I think it was last week, and, uh, I had to be at UCM teaching, so I couldn't attend, but, uh, there's an article in the paper. If, if you're curious about it, just go to, the Steamboat Arabia is already a museum in Kansas City, but that's got to come out of Kansas City by two thousand and twenty-six. And if you just go to that Arabia website, it'll talk to you and explain the Arabia and that museum, and then they found the Malta, which is near Malta Bin, and they're going to bring that steamship up. So, it's really an exciting process and, uh, eventually they want to have six of those steamboats, uh, at that museum for each of the basic decades where steamboats sailed up and down the Missouri and the Mississippi. So, it'll be, it'll be a national museum. Uh, the plan goes up to twenty forty-six, but we need to get behind it, I think it's really been a neat thing to do.
Can imagine what that dynamic would mean for the state.
Be a big dynamic.
Yeah, and it's at the, it's at the intersection of sixty-five and seventy.
Right, yeah.
I can work on that and talk to Tom about it.
Okay.
Do you think that's a good idea, Tom? As a presentation?
I think, I think it'd be cool to learn about, I'm interested in how it would affect other elected officials across the state. Let's see what these, these meetings are for, but I think it'd be interesting to, to hear about.
And I haven't given out the other idea. Anybody else like to make any comments tonight? We have a new baby in, in our family.
Baby was so cute.
A cute puss baby.
Oh, God. Cuter than you. A little bit, not much.
So, anybody out there in our fine audience who'd like to make any comments tonight? Randy, we never hear from you.
I like that one.
But you've got that nice radio voice.
And the biggest word for that.
Well, thanks for coming.
Seeing nothing, I motion to move into closed-door meeting, uh, in pursuant to section one legal advice, two real estate and three personnel.
Second. Roll call please.
Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
No.
I'll bet you were a cute baby.
How cute.
I'm... A girly baby, a girly baby. Okay, baby.
Excuse me.
My baby won't you look at you.
Yeah. Call me a boomer.
Especially we. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Whatever we need on Tuesday, I just pop on Tuesday. We've got four other little girls, now, let me see, we've got one more, we have seven little girls. Oldest is seven years old and now they're all over the baby works and even, that last room she keeps it all to get hurt. I got her one of them whole overhead projectors and she, they just, the last couple times they just go downstairs like, wow. She keep them, they come up eight of them, it's like, I won't last long. I was going to say, that's... Oh, there we go. And girl, she's driving them in the...
That's a good thing, right?
Yeah.
I talk too much of talk.
Yeah, they're just... She's coming. I thought the ordinance was... I'm pretty happy. They're just taking out... I'm... I'm... I've got three...
Nothing. I'm kind of punchy. Everybody in? Motion to open session, open, open session.
We're going to adjourn, aren't we? Yeah.
Do we just, oh, we just, that's...
Don't we have to, don't we have to open it? Uh-uh, no, no. Yeah, I seconded, I'm sorry.
So, motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Lehman is absent. Oldham?
Yes, bye.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yeah, yeah.
Cross?
What do you mean, come?
Not enough.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Okay, goodbye.